God bless America. Welcome to the Ranch, everybody. Podcast explores the people and happenings of Drake Creek Ranch, Eagle, and the greater Boise area. This is the third installment of the Eagle City Council interviews. Now, the ground rules were, of course, no one knew what questions I was going to ask, and I did not publish any of the interviews until all of the other interviews were done. And by doing this, I was sure that there was going to be no contamination of information. I do greatly appreciate the candidates taking the time to come out and talk to me. Obviously, they did not have to. This podcast is brought to you by Old State Saloon. I love this spot. They just remodeled it few months back. They have wonderful live music. They have wonderful beer on tap, and the setting itself is just fantastic. Go down, check it out, have a drink, and enjoy yourself like I always do at Old State Saloon. My guest today is a very, very involved individual. He actually ran in the last election cycle and has been working extensively with his homeowners association and just with people in general in the community. He hits the city council meetings, and he really has an understanding of the larger issues that Eagle is facing as well, which was awesome to hear. I really enjoyed speaking with him, and he in particular reminded me how lucky the area is to have such awesome candidates, and I think Eagle will be very well-served no matter who gets elected. But without further ado, the man, the myth, the legend, Robert Imhoff. Sweat, thank you for coming, sir. I appreciate you.
I'm happy to be here. Thank you for having me.
So you're running, running for town council. You live in the southeast corner of Eagle, correct?
That's right.
Okay. Or is it, actually Eagle goes pretty far south. So you just live in the southeast corner over near where 55 hits 44, right?
Yeah, 55 and 44, like we're in a southeast corner. But as you know, there's two rivers. There's another southeast corner that, you know, goes up Eagle Road towards Meridian.
Right.
So I'm at the first southeast corner, like, and we border everybody. We border Boise and we border BLM or Open Ada Land, and we border Garden Valley or Garden City, excuse me. So we have like, it's kind of bizarre wherever you're standing on that intersection, you're in a different municipality.
Right. And that, like, you really do bleed into a lot of different places really fast around here, which is kind of, which is kind of interesting. Then finding out that Avamore is actually part of three different counties. It's like, oh, gosh, man, what a train wreck.
Yeah, that's right. And in fact, our subdivision, the Great Sky Estates subdivision, is the only one in Eagle that all of our kids actually go to Boise, not West Ada.
Really?
That's right. So when it was built 25 years ago, like, they carved it out for that. So all of our kids actually go into Boise and into Garden City to go to school. So none of them will actually go to like Eagle High. So that's an interesting thing that I brought up that some people like, some people don't.
Now, one of the things that you, you would really like to do is increase collaboration with local schools, correct?
That's right. Yeah.
Okay, now, help me understand this because I am doing interviews with the Board of Education, Board of Education candidates. I came, I came from education, very much love it. I love helping educate young and old. Doesn't matter. I don't even care what I'm teaching. Like, I could be teaching jujitsu or, you know, podcasting or math and grammar. Like, it doesn't matter to me. But the Boise School District is distinctly different from the West Ada School District, or at least it appears to be in, in, in a number of ways. Are you, what's driving you to, to increase collaboration with the schools in West Ada?
So again, I'm with Boise, but literally everybody else will be with West Ada. There, obviously, people are talking about growth, right? And a lot of younger families are coming to Eagle. Like, the average age of who is a resident in Eagle, you know, was 55. Now it's drifting down to 38. So we're getting a lot more younger families or they're getting their start here or moving here with their families. And the city controls land within the city borders. We coordinate with Ada County on certain aspects and the state on other aspects. But where does West Ada need to be next? Do they need another elementary school in our borders? Do they need a second high school in our borders? Do they need that high school to expand in our borders? If we're not coordinating with West Ada on simple questions like that, even if it's an, you ask the question to get a straightforward answer, well, we at least asked the question and we have an answer. But I don't see right now publicly, maybe privately, there's these discussions, but I don't see publicly that the city is taking a forward approach of, you know, is there some, an empty lot near a school? Should we help them acquire that? Or do we know the landowners? Is it us, the city, that own that? Like, like, or is there this other lot? And we, we control the zoning here, right? People know what a zone is, or they ask for a variance to the city council and the planning commission. So we control all of that within the city. So how much are we coordinating with West Ada to say, you know, is the demographic ripe for a new school? We don't, none of us want our kids. We hear these horror stories right now nationwide, kids being dropped off eight, nine, 10 o'clock at night because some bus algorithm dumped them off in the wrong direction. And we had a little bit of that with West Ada last year, right? So we know that they are expanding and they're having a hard time getting bus drivers. And then when they do get the bus drivers, you're going farther and farther out to pick up kids. So we should be asking those questions of like, West Ada, we're not Baltimore. We're not Chicago. We're not New York where the city council controls the city and the schools. We're not an East Coast setup of a city. Like, they have West Ada, they have their, you know, trustees that run the board for them, and then we have our city councillors. And, but we need to discuss those things, I think. That's, it's a really simple ask and it's a quick win. You know, even if I don't get elected, I hope people hear this and say, yeah, maybe we should just ask that question publicly and get a response publicly. And then people will feel like, when it comes to playground equipment, it's not just the parents who have skin in the game, it's the city. You know, it's everybody in the city that's impacted by that kind of stuff, right? I feel.
This podcast is brought to you by MTUstudios.com. If you're looking to start a podcast or make content for any level of your business, MTU Studios can help. Just reach out to us today and we can start shooting tomorrow. Yeah, no, and there are a lot of things that you said that, that I kind of want to touch on. First off, that I think there is a shifting public sentiment that there are more things going on in private than people know.
Right.
For instance, there, did you watch the city council meeting or from, from this last week on Tuesday?
As far as with the police and all that, yeah.
It was brutal, but I mean, just really, really a bummer. That it's just really a bummer that that's kind of where the city council, that's where the city government is right now. Because again, and I'm not, I'm not saying I know what's right or wrong or anything, but it's like, dang, man, like, this is not, it's kind of like being at a, my parents got divorced, and I remember right before they got divorced, it was like, being at the dinner table is always uncomfortable. It's like, God, man, I can't, I was only seven, you know? It was like, I even knew, I was like, this is not working out. But there, there is a growing perception that things are happening behind the scenes, and there's not as much transparency as people would like. And, and again, I don't know the accuracy of what Charlie Bond wrote on, when he went, you know, wrote his several posts on Nextdoor about Brad Pike. But there was the idea that, I believe it was confirmed that like, these people, or excuse me, not these people, but a few of the city council members got together outside of city meetings and, you know, discussed the issues that they felt were relevant with Brad Pike, and they wanted to bring to, you know, the public's attention, and then posted these things. It was like, wait, what else are you doing in private? Like, what, what's going on here? And so there's a sentiment that things are happening in private and that public, public opinions are not being taken into account. So we're lacking transparency and accountability to, to what the public actually wants. Do you, do you think that that's a fair sentiment that's developing? Or do you think that, you know, like transparency in general is pretty good? We could do a little bit better? What, what are your thoughts?
Well, I have quite a bit of thoughts and
Well, we have quite a bit of time.
On, on the transparency versus opacity and, and the city of Eagle. And there's actually a lot of civically engaged people here in Eagle. And a lot of people assert that, no, it's just a small minority of squeaky wheels. But everywhere I go, when I'm walking, you know, I'm not mailing out flyers. I'm walking to people's houses and giving them flyers, trying to understand people. Because frankly, everybody knows that I pay attention to a lot of this in my neighborhood, and they came to me and said, like, we don't want to be the ones to step up, but you look like you could step up. Can you be our voice? Can you be our voice? And because suddenly the speed limit's 20 miles an hour in downtown. Suddenly, there's a variance on Hill Road where a building got built, where it was more denser than was normally allotted, right? Suddenly, there's a whole new public storage building going up on the freeway there that's a lot more gaudy than people were anticipating. They were thinking of like a low one, and now we're seeing these like two-story facades like being put up and everything, and it's changing the character. And I keep on using this word suddenly because when people go to the city or go to the city council members today and say, where did this speed limit thing? Well, if you're not paying attention, that's your own fault. You should have came down here and said something. You know, like, we can't tell you about every little thing we do. Or you need to be paying closer to civic things. But it constantly comes up, like, suddenly there's a lawsuit with Home Depot. Suddenly, there's a shutdown of the senior center. Like, everything's suddenly, like, suddenly, like, everybody is in unison and on the same page on city council. But the public is like, why are we just hearing about this? Or why are we noticing it after the fact, you know? And so I think that we need to stop saying suddenly more. We need to start saying like, this was definitely anticipated that this was going to come up. We talked about it. We socialized it with everybody in the community. We're not Boise. We're not over 250,000 citizens. There's only 38,000 people that live in this town, you know? So, and it's in a tight geographical area. We're kind of landlocked by Meridian to the south and Boise and, and Garden City to the east and Starr to the west. And it's open to the north, but we're just kind of in this little pocket. It should be very straightforward for us to communicate with our citizens and let them know what's coming up, what's on the minds, what's, how are we meeting this 40-year plan that everybody keeps talking about, right? I, I don't know how lowering the speed limit from 25 to 20, you know, helps everybody. You know, I feel like if you're pro-small business, if you're pro-business and you want people visiting downtown, but then you also simultaneously say, well, we're lowering the speed limit because there's too many people going through that corridor right now. So you don't want people going through and seeing your small businesses and visiting them and patroning them, you know, but, and your way to do that is to lower the speed limit. And then when you tell everybody why you did it, it was for safety. But every report, I just read a report out of the UK that said, when you lower it below 25, you actually cause more congestion. So you, maybe you don't have as many accidents, but suddenly everybody's bumper-to-bumper when you go too slow in these areas. I don't know. Did they read that report? Did they put it to consideration? Hard to say because we don't have the transparency that I think the citizens want.
Right. When you talk about communicating back and, communicating with the citizenry, you're, you're, you're saying, it, it sounds that you're really emphasizing, expressing, you know, what's on the agenda essentially, like, look, we're considering this, we're considering this. But there's also a feeling that it's, there's, one, that there's insufficient one-way communication coming out of the city government, and that there's zero communication being considered coming from the citizenry back to the, to the, oh my gosh, to, to the town council and mayor. I was, administration. The word completely escaped me. But again, they're talking about Avamore, which is a big, big piece of, big piece of what you're talking about. It's almost like I'm hitting my head against the wall. And again, I don't, I didn't vote for Avamore. I didn't know, I didn't know anything about it. It was like, it was a place up there that we, you know, thought was too far out to move to, so we, we moved here. Whatever, it is what it is. Like, I don't, I don't have skin in the game here. But people talking about being, being for Avamore and being against Avamore, it's like, okay, like, that's, it's very interesting. Like, let me hear about it. So obviously Mayor Pierce emphasized that, that we get control of that development, which is like, okay, that makes sense, you know? It's like, we can decrease the density, we can utilize more of the open spaces. We can do, we can do stuff with it. It's like, okay, look, I'm not a planning and developing guy, but like, that makes sense to me. And then turning around and hearing, you know, former Mayor Ridgeway and then Councilman Brad Pike say, look, it's not financially viable. Like, yeah, I would love to have a two-acre backyard that I could do all kinds of things with and benefit.
That'd be great.
Yeah, it would be wonderful. Financially, I can't do it. Like, I can't even do the half acres. I can't, I don't have, I don't have it. So taking all that into consideration, it's like, okay, what, what was the public's input on this? And two things, one, do you feel like the public sentiment and, and opinions were taken into account with the decision to annex in Avamore? And two, do you think the benefits, that's the first direction of conversation? Do you think the other direction of, of, of communication with the benefits the city of Eagle gets out of bringing Avamore in were properly expressed? Or even were those reasons justifying that decision?
Yeah, lots to unpack there.
Lots to unpack. So again, communication.
But let's talk about what the city says, what our city leaders currently say. They say, like, for example, I'd like to bring the speed limit in downtown back up to 25 miles an hour. They said, what, the consistent thing they said was, why didn't you show up and tell us you weren't interested in it being lowered to 20? If you really didn't want that lowered to 20, you should have showed up. Okay, so let's take that premise. Show up to city council during these meetings and voice your concerns. Okay, nobody showed up for that. How many people showed up for the Avamore decision? Not just city council, but also the planning commission. Record numbers. There was, they had to split both meetings into two separate days. And even with that, they ended up having to turn people away and stop accepting comments. Has not happened in the last five years here in Eagle, that much civic participation in something that's happening in our city. So on one hand, they say, show up and have your voice heard. That's why we did that thing without knowing people didn't want that speed limit loaded. Record number of people never showed up in more droves than they have for Avamore. Only one person dissented on that, put in a dissenting vote. In fact, our own planning commission, they looked at the whole plan and said, this doesn't make sense. So the city actually like ignored the recommendations of our paths. We have like a committee that works on like the paths and the parkways and, and the jogging paths. And they said, the way that this is designed for their paths is not consistent with the aesthetic and the long-term viability of our pass system. You should put that into consideration. They ignored that. The planning commission said, you don't have control over a lot of the aspects of this as is. So I did hear a lot of people say, well, you don't understand everything. You don't have all the information. Well, we had like four separate days of public comment. Where was the people providing us with this information? This nebulous information that everybody that was for the Avamore annexation, you just don't have enough information. What am I missing? What was the information I should have had that we all could have been convinced and none of us would have showed up? So this is what we talk about with like transparency, right? Like, they keep saying there's that information, but none of it was presented, or at least a convincing argument wasn't presented to change people's mind. And let's look at some of the benefits. I think this is, nobody's talking about this, and this is fascinating to me. When you look on KTVB, when you look on Boise Dev articles discussing this, they always are trying to be fair and impartial.
Sure.
Here's why the people who don't want it, don't want it. Let's get a comment for the people who say why this is a good idea and good for the city of Eagle. And the number one reason cited is, we will have more control over Avamore. Like, we'll have more control over that development if we annex it into the city. But that's 100% untrue. In fact, that's why the planning commission didn't want it approved. Because if you look at our city charter, you have, this is how you deal with trees. This is how you deal with new developments. This is how you deal with easements. And then you look, and then this is like speed limits and how we find people for parking. You know, you have the whole system of laws and ordinances within the city of Eagle. Then all the way down at the bottom, you have two special categories. One for Vale, Valnova, which they categorize as a spring valley in the ordinance. And then right below that, it says Avamore. So what, if you click on that Avamore link in our city charter, it says, the rest of the city will design their buildings and look one way. They'll have their trees look one way. They'll have their front yards look one way. And Avamore, and this cannot be changed without Avamore developers agreeing to it, will do everything their own way. So this big arguments, people say, we need to annex them so we can control what they do. Well, we annex them and put in a unchangeable rule in our ordinance that says, we can't, if they decide that they want to build 1,200 in one year, we can't stop them. If they want to have zero scape instead of zero scape, you know, like rocks and everything in their front yards, it's in their plan. That's what they said they wanted to do. We have to let them do it that way. So this idea of we need Eagle to look a certain way, that we approve things like, In-N-Out has to look a certain way. The McDonald's has to have all these trees in front of it to mask that it's McDonald's, you know? Like, we're trying to keep this certain Eagle charm. We have to, the rest of us have to do that. But then Avamore, they've already picked exactly what their charm is going to be and what it's going to look like. And any future city council has no say without them coming to the table first and saying, we want to make a variance on our plan. But if the city says, you know what, times have changed, ordinances have changed, we want to make a variance on the Avamore plan, they're like, they can just say no. So, so this argument like, we had no choice but to say yes, because maybe we'd have gotten sued or maybe they would have caused these other problems. Boise, all the time, they know they have to let apartment complex go up or a townhome complex go up. And what do they say? Well, we like these five different buildings, but they all look the same. Can you come back to us? We'll say no if you submit it now, but come back to us. And like, change the facades around a little bit. They can, they change the facades and then they say, okay, now it's approved. We didn't do any of that. We just rubber stamped this Avamore thing and just rushed it through. Everybody will say, well, this has been five years in the making. Well, five years of the developer, five years of various city council people talking with them, but only six months of public comment, six months of publicly showing, this is what we're going to do. How many community meetings they started and got canceled? Like, like, it's, everybody's arguing, we're not going to talk here anymore. How many that were they supposed to have that they just decided not to have? And people, because everybody that showed up was mad and angry and upset. So clearly the community spoke up here on this particular issue. I just said a whole bunch
No, 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 no.
Stuff for you to unpack yourself.
Listening, taking it all in. And, and again, what you're saying is kind of, there is this void. And again, Mayor Pierce did not have a vote, right? So I mean, obviously, speaking with him, I can't say like, you know, why did you vote this? He didn't. He was like, look, they made the decision and he thought it was the right decision. And he, he did say exactly what you said. We have more control over how it's developed and how it turns out now. They're, you know, a close neighbor of ours, and having control over, over how that close neighbor does things is a, is a benefit to Eagle. Said, all right, that's, that's fine. But what you're saying very clearly is, we don't really have control over them. The developer gets control. That can't be changed. They're going to have their own aesthetic. They're going to have their own regulations for walking paths, speed limits, all of those different things. And, and again, communication, right? If there were these other benefits outside of having control of this other, like, we don't have control of Garden City. Does anybody worry about that?
Right.
No, like, we don't have control of Meridian. They're, they're building 2,500 homes a year. Does anybody worry about that? I don't worry about Meridian. Do you? No. Like, there could be a development on the moon. I don't care. Like, it doesn't, doesn't matter to me. And again, I'm, I'm not saying I know all of the facts. What I'm saying is, as you're indicating, this, this nebulous, unidentifiable, unidentifiable benefit aside from having control, has never been, you know, successfully articulated. At, at least that's what I'm understanding from the conversations I've, I've had with everybody. It's like, okay, again, Mayor Pierce, you thought it was the right decision. You didn't make the call, but you did think it was the right decision that people made it. Your recommendation was for it, and you, you want control of it. Okay, I get that. But does that justify, so, does that justify what it costs Eagle? So in your mind, if you were, if you were on the town council at the time the vote was coming through, for Avamore or not?
Definitely not as written. I want to be
Not as written. Now, that's, that's important.
I want to be clear, I like that we grow. We just all are going to naturally grow. And, you know, Valnova is going to continue to grow. And there's going to be developers, like, right now, near my house on Hill Road, they're building out this whole Estrada development. It was all just like empty land. Like, development will occur. It's just what development where and who's responsible? Like, Avamore is this great concept for a little township on the other side of the hill. That's great. Why does it have to be Eagle's township is a big question. And if it is going to be our township, how much control are we going to really have with that over there? And I'd want to be fair to the developers during this whole process when they presented their arguments. They had this bullet list of other things besides Eagle will have control. This is what city leaders say their justification is.
Sure.
But the development itself, they had this bullet list of reasons why they think, like, it should be annexed into Eagle. And like, one of them, for example, is, well, we will expand the Highway 55 as part of this. And, and like, so you want us to annex it so we can, but developers are told that they have to expand anyways. Whether it's expand, whether, like,
Whether it's part of the city of Eagle or not.
Yeah, like, Ada County is going to say, well, you got to widen that. Jem County is going to say, you're going to have to widen that. You know, Boise County, you're going to have to widen that.
Right. BHH is going to have to widen 55 all the way up to like the golf course or something. Yeah.
For them to say in their bullet points that they're going to have the brevity to do this, like, well, somebody was going to tell you to do that anyways. Well, we're going to give away land to build elementary schools or other, or middle schools here. Well, the land's going to be required no matter what. So you're just having, again, the brevity to give away. But now you're picking where you want that school to be in your neighborhood, not working with West Ada, working with Eagle. Where does it make sense? We have all of these maps. We have all of these growth area things. They can just say, nobody's going to buy land right here in this parcel. It's kind of off here. It's kind of too close to a foothill that has, you know, some rock slides or something. We'll just give them that, you know?
You're saying they're going to give the elementary school to the rock slide parcel? Well, well, maybe. I don't know. It doesn't have a good view.
It doesn't have a good view. Correct. Yeah. Not that the kids would get injured, but
No, I, I get your point. I get you.
So now, now Avamore gets to pick where those, where they're, because they didn't say in advance, the elementary school will be here. And we don't have a say in where it is. Well, we'll have a say in the sense that they'll listen to us, but they don't have to.
Gotcha.
So, and then another thing is, if before they did the annex, they should have went to West Ada. They should have went to the school districts in Jem and the school districts in Boise County and said, listen, we think we're going to annex this over there. It makes the right choice. You have school districts that technically aren't here, just like my neighborhood is not in West Ada. My neighborhood, it goes to Boise School District. There's no reason why those counties can't pass an ordinance saying, you know what? For the Avamore Division, we're just going to carve out and say that's going to be West Ada. And if they had came to our city and said, look, we already figured out the school stuff. Don't worry, kids are not going to go to high school in Emmett. Kids are not going to go to high school in Horseshoe Bend. They're all going to come back to Eagle. They're all going to be on the same bus. They're all going to be friends in the neighborhood and friends at school.
Right.
Friends on the football team, friends at, at home. It's all going to be connected. They didn't do any of this stuff. And it's very easy for the city to say, we like what you're doing, but what about this? What about this? Maybe they did, and they said no, but again, we don't have that transparency. So I'm not against Avamore per se. I'm against like, all the stuff that they sold us a bill of goods. They said it's going to be good for us, but sending kids to Horseshoe Bend from there for high school, that doesn't sound good to those people.
No, no, it doesn't.
So.
Now, one of the, one of the biggest kind of brouhahas over Avamore, aside from people feeling like their voices weren't being heard, was really what to do with the public services, right? And it's like, listen, we just added a big chunk of people population-wise. We added a monster area geographic-wise that is geographically removed from the, what rest of the Eagle, Eagle Town.
Right.
You know, so obviously, the, the law enforcement aspect came in. And this is really one of the things that, looking, looking through this whole, whole last six months, it's like, this lit on fire hard. Because, you know, again, the last time the city council had approved, prior to Tuesday, the last time the city council had approved additional law enforcement, it was 2021 in October. You know, they were, so it's been a little while.
Right.
What do you think about law enforcement? There, there's so many considerations. Do we need a certain ratio of the, the number one to 1,000 is thrown around a lot? Do we need to keep them as a deterrent and just kind of hold steady at this level? Do you think that the citizens of Eagle are getting ta, and double taxed as Mayor Pierce feels they are? Do you think it would be worth exploring, starting Eagle, starting their own police department? And again, I know I'm hitting you with a lot of different questions, but this all seems to be coming out where there's a sentiment that the residents of Eagle are getting double taxed because they pay county taxes and then they pay the sheriff's department to have an Eagle Police Department. There's all kinds of questions about whether or not we're actually completely understaffed if we should be trying to achieve the one per 1,000 ratio. Just hit me with the thoughts on it. Again, this broad, in broad strokes, but like, there's a lot here that I think a lot of people are very, very concerned about.
Well, let's start off and just be clear, like, we need police in our patrolling dedicated to our city. So to roll back the contract and just pay into the county and not have a dedicated police department, whether we're outsourcing it to the county or we decide at some point in the future to just home-grow our own and it's completely detached from them, we, we need dedicated police. We, we need dedicated police here. Barna. Now, uh, my platform is that, you know, I want to try and roll back. Avamore, like have us DX and there's actually code in Idaho law that you could try and use and there's other strategies you can do. But for the sake of argument, it's not gonna work. Everybody advises us. The city's gonna put itself in a sling. We're gonna have to have Avamore here going forward. They are part of the city. And on a go forward basis, regardless of. How much we're upset that it's now part of us and that's the way it is. They need police and dedicated police just like us because they're our city. What is disconcerting to me is they kind of get to have their cake and eat it too out there because they're so detached. Well, we're gonna need a police department out there. We're gonna need a fire department out there. So now you're gonna have two, three officers. Dedicated there, a full engine dedicated there. It's gonna be like they're their own city and they get their own custom. Private police department and private uh fire department that's exclusive to them. Yes, if there's a major call on fifty-five, maybe those officers will drive down here. But they're more than likely than not to get called to county calls outside of Alamo in that area. Than they are to be pulled back. So they get to basically have their own township with their own brick and mortar, police and fire department. And the rest of the city is gonna pay for it because the economies of scale, the rest of us, our taxes are gonna go up. They're gonna pay more. I speak to people over at Alamo and they're like, we know our taxes are going up, but we, it was in our CC and ours. We couldn't stop them from trying to annex us. We had no skin in this game. They had to allow them to do it. So a lot of people out there, they themselves are like, we didn't want to be part of. Eagle, but here we are, but here we are. And they deserve safety and fire response just as much as anybody else. But now we're gonna be in a situation where it's like, why do they get two dedicated officers? Why do they get three firefighters down there? You know, dedicated just to them. So it's a bad look in a way, but we, it needs to happen. If, if that's the direction we're gonna go in, and that's. That's a, that, that is what it is because pub, I'm not gonna sacrifice public safety because we don't like something, right?
Right. And especially you don't like a decision that you didn't make that happened sometime in the past that you can't do anything about it.
Correct.
They're like, well, we shouldn't have to blank, blank, blank. It's like, that's irrelevant. What, what's relevant now is that Avamore is part of Eagle and those people deserve. The exact same services that the rest of Eagle deserves. It's just gonna cost everybody more. Because response times are more and we're gonna have to theoretically add more people. Now again, the, one of the twelve questions I asked you is, do you think we should, we did? Um, excuse me, I should stop saying we. The, the administration did vote to add. Two more deputies to the poll. Okay, which is, I thought was great.
Hundred percent.
Awesome.
Yes.
Do you think they should keep going though? Or do you think the two is sufficient?
I think the two is sufficient for here and now. I think three to four more over the next four years, we'll say, is probably the prudent thing. We actually do a pretty, pretty good job here of when it was referred to as community policing. The police being out, they're not just there pulling, like being a speed trap. They're not there just responding to uh nine-one-one calls. They're, you know, like when we have Eagle days, they're out there spending time with the community. You know, they have booths and stuff at Gerber Park and they're giving little stickers to the kids along with the firefighters, you know, like. It's there to en- ensure us safety is right around the corner. That if something catastrophic happened, huge accident, they're able to cordon things off, have some first aid that the firefighters don't, they can get there faster. And start responding. They're not just there because crime, right?
Because crime, right?
You know, like crime is uh what we see in the TV shows and the movies, you know, are police officers good? Are they bad? All these shows are showing that they're doing these things, you know, like um Crash, that movie, you know, really painted the LA police in a really poor light, right? Like, we're.
I didn't care for that movie. Did you like that movie?
Not especially, no.
And it got so much press, like it really, it won awards, critically acclaimed. And I watched out of like. This movie's trash. Like, I don't know. I mean.
And then they had a TV show spinoff on it.
I know. I thi- I think people are just, they're just grabbing at the lowest hanging fruit with that. I, I don't know. We're not gonna talk about Crash. Anyway, I apologize.
But my point is, like, um, you know, that's TV and reality is, you know, you wanna see police officers. This is a, a criticism I'll give of Ada County, a, 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 a very small criticism. I really don't like. Police cruisers that are blacked out as much as possible. Like, you wanna know there's a police officer in a parking lot. You wanna know that there's a police officer's car parked. At the local subway, you know, you, just their mere presence. Hey, I see them driving around. Hey, I see those light bars up. You know, that's the, what I think is good community policing.
The paint on the sides white though, right?
For our city.
For the. Hear my bad joke and you're actually taking me seriously. Okay, so the, the county patrolers.
The county patrolers, all there's, it says police all blacked out on the side, but, but our cars for the city of Eagle, they have white. They have the same county logo star.
I was gonna say, it looks really nice. Okay, okay. I see what you're saying. That's a, that's a fair point.
But that's the, the county uh cruisers, like, I feel like you wanna know that the police are around, you know, like. I come home from Steelhead's games at ten thirty at night and invariably on State Street, there's always a couple of county cruisers having somebody pulled over there. On State over by the Maverica gas station. Uh, there's always one, I don't know what it is, that time of night, somebody's doing something that requires them being pulled over. After every single game. I'm season ticket holder, so I, I'm down there in Boise all the time watching those games. And uh, yeah, at the games, we have the police officers that just stand there towards the exits. You have big events, you're required to have police present at big events, you're required to have.
Sure.
Firefighters at big events, but they're not just sitting there off in the corner. They're interacting with the public. The public comes up to them and thanks them for their service or. Hey, you helped me on this crash over here. Do you remember me? Like, oh yeah, I remember that crash from two, they're interacting. That's what. That's the side of policing. I hope people remember, you know, that's why these guys and gals all join up for the forces. For that, they wanna know that they're keeping their community safe and that the community knows they're there, not the crime. So that's my big, long drawn out way of saying this one per thousand thing, it's not necessarily the right fit just to say. Well, yeah, in a Baltimore, in a Chicago, in a New York, in an LA, the one per thousand means a lot in those densely populated, high density. High population areas, but thirty-eight thousand citizens. You know, like, there's, there's a difference there. You don't necessarily have to go by the rule of the big city, right?
Right. In a relatively affluent sleepy area. Right. Now, now there is, there is a disparity between origins of crime. Is it locally sponsored, uh locally? You know, kind of bred crime verse crime coming from outside. And of course you want to be deterrent from crime coming from the outside. And you want to make sure that you give the citizens enough. You know, obviously, opportunity to thrive and grow and engage so that they don't turn to a life of crime, local citizens, right?
That's right.
You know, again, if we were, if this was a town of thirty-eight thousand and there were, you know, if we were financially destitute and. There, there were a lot of problems that lead to locally sponsored crime. And you have outside influences coming in. Then I, I see what you're saying, which is, you know, yeah, we could, we could need one in a thousand. But your position is, yeah, let, let's keep growing the force. We don't necessarily need to hit to the one in a thousand mark.
Right.
But we need to keep keeping up with it. We need to make sure that we're maintaining the, the safety and quality of life that people have come to expect.
That's right. And again, the visual police presence, if we're gonna be covering more ground. Like, I see when I'm on the road, I see at least one cruiser every time I'm out on the road here. When I go pick up my daughter from school. Um, I see one either in the parking lot adjacent to her school or on the road. I see them just. Like, just driving around, being present. And that in of itself deters so much because it sends signals to the people coming in thinking. Oh, this is a sleepy bedroom community, you know, maybe I can break into houses or something. But as soon as they come in, they're immediately met with. There, there's a police park there. There's a police on the road there. There's a police walking a beat, so to speak, downtown. You know, they're like, well, this is a town that takes its public safety seriously, you know, um, and so that's a good deterrent. And I'm pretty sure any police officer or any police uh association will agree, you know, like, police presence is a huge deterrent. And so adding some more officers to maintain that visual is worth a lot, but do we need to add ten more? Probably not.
Gotcha. Gotcha. And again, that's a, that's a really nice kind of middle ground position, which, which I think is awesome. Speaking of, you mentioned changing demographics uh earlier on, so you know, going from. Average age in the fifties down to like average age in the high thirties, more families moving to the area. I mean, obviously it's a fantastic place to raise kids and it seems like I would love to retire here as well, like that, that would be great. But. How do we support all of those people, right? Because the budget in Eagle has ballooned. Number of city employees in Eagle has ballooned. First, do you think that the city of Eagle and the citizens of Eagle are getting the return on their investment from our increase in budget and employment base?
Uh, well, that's hard to say. Again, I don't have all the numbers, so um. Those are not, those are presented in a way to the public where, you know, it's not very clear. If I was them, I would try and have bullet points and ring to the, to the hills as much as possible, like, see, look how well this worked out. Um, or look how we're stretching our dollar is another important thing of, yes, we expanded it, but that was a measured expansion. Uh, so I don't know, to be quite frank.
And that's totally fair, right?
I don't know how well we're doing that. And I'd love to find out more and get more involved uh while on city council and then socialize, like come back on your. Podcast later and say, you know what, we, we left that question hanging. I got an answer for you now, you know?
Right.
And uh here, it's great or it's not great. And here's what we're doing, you know, so uh, but I will tell you, like. The city, you know, we had Eagle Days, which is a fun thing that's been going on for years. Um, a lot of feedback from Eagle Day. So like, are they doing things well? I, I feel like they're slipping a little bit. Like we had this parade where you throw water balloons and people come in the cars and wave and all that. Um, but they cut the parade in half without telling everybody at the last second, they said, oh, it's starting at Hill Road. It's not starting at Edgewood. And now you had everybody packing in. And then on top of that, uh, one of the city officials was, went public on social media and said. Oh yeah, if you wanna just hold your own spot and put a chair there, you know, the day before you can do that. So all of a sudden there was this mad scramble, like it's the Rose Bowl Parade in Pasadena, California. And so when people that casually said, oh, I think we have time, we can go down there and they go down to do the parade and it's. Not a spot for any casual person to show up. And then the people were there, they're putting, they're cordoning off and putting tape and everything. And then I was like, you know what? I have a friend who has a business down there. And uh she's the property manager. I'll ask her, like, hey, maybe I can just go in front of your prop, it's your property. So I can say like, no, no, like we're gonna cordon it off. And she's like, sure. And we go down there like, nope, we did it. I'm like. But we have permission from the owner of this business. And they're like, and then they're like, well, the sidewalk and this and that, and they start getting into all that kind of stuff. And we're like, oh gosh, you know, like, like we were trying to be clever and be like, okay, we're gonna do it the right way and work with the business that it's in front of. And everybody, and so it was in every person from themselves. Last time I checked, we're supposed to be this small community. Where it's not every person for themselves and every family for themselves. It's supposed to be, we're gonna get along. So why they shrunk their parade route? I don't know. Why they allowed everybody to make reserves of where they could sit the day before. And now you have people like, hey, I gotta leave work and go get some lawn chairs and throw it down there because I'm not gonna have a spot for tomorrow, you know, um. And then you actually get to the downtown area and it's gorgeous. They got the cars over here. And they got all the booths and vendors over there and they got the uh cornhole and I love playing in that every year. It's super fun. But one thing I observed, and I don't know how the city missed this, but there was a single public trash can anywhere. Anywhere, not on the parade route. And they're like, don't use water balloons, cause then they break and then they get stuck and it's hard to get them up and we have to clean that. But then they don't even provide trash bins. And usually I thought there was things uh at the county level. Where they're like, oh, if you're gonna have a event of a certain size, you're required to put out, like to work with Harden. And put out these like cardboard square trash bins everywhere.
Throwaway bins.
Yeah, just like have these all set up. There wasn't a single one. There was one vendor that brought their own hardened trash bin out. And then it was overflowing because it was the only trash bin uh near the gazebo. It's just some weird head scratching stuff of. Like, uh, so are they doing a good job with uh? The expansion and having the parks department do this? I'm glad they host it. I hope we have it for many years to come. Are they having some growing pains with stuff? Absolutely. Will those growing pains be solved by hiring more people? I don't know, but probably listening to the public and taking feedback, like after the, an event like that, when somebody says in public comment. Hey, here's X, Y, and Z you wanna think of for next year. Did they hear it? I don't know.
Right.
We'll see. So maybe a little bit more being deliberative about things. Um, and if they're more deliberative about things, then if we need to expand the government, we like, well. Well, this didn't go so well. If we had a couple more people in the parks, we could have done X, Y, and Z, you know, but you have to have that two-way communication path. So.
Right, right.
So do I know if we're set right or not? Well, I don't because we're low information.
Gotcha. And, and again, very, makes perfect sense. Then. Again, we're, we're a growing community as we keep coming back to, right? We're, we're becoming a younger community. How do we manage to get? The holy grail of employment and, and tax revenue, the mom and pops, right? How do we do essentially make Eagle like the most habitable incubator for mom and pops possible? Because we can't just be a community where people just come and they sleep and then they go spend their money elsewhere, right? That's, we're not gonna be able to maintain the level of services. We're not gonna be able to continue bringing on new deputies and increasing the parks and rec and, and things like that. How do we pay? For these things, it has to be taxed off. So how do we incubate, right? How do we get more mom pops, but also recognize that it's like, I love shopping at Home Depot.
Yeah.
You know, I would love it if there was a Costco here, right? We hit Winco, you know, like we, we do these things and, and nobody likes to say that corporate America is great. But the big box stores and, and stores like that do bring in very consistent valuable tax revenue.
That's right.
So how do we get both? How do we get the benefit of being an incubator for mom pop shops, but also find a way to, to successfully integrate larger businesses and in fact attract them?
Yeah, and uh, let's be clear, and maybe this won't get me votes, or maybe I'll lose votes by saying this, but you know. Every business has a right to be a business and come into a community and be a business in that community. I, I wholeheartedly believe that. So um, you know, places like San Francisco where they actually tell people that are large organizations. You cannot have more than eleven Starbucks in the entire city. Of San Francisco. You cannot have more than eleven Rite Aids in the entire, so they say, fine, you're this big business that's nationwide, worldwide, whatever. We, like San Francisco actually has an ordinance that limits how many storefronts. That person or that, that entity can have. And in other places, they say, well, we don't even want. X type of business in our community, period.
Right.
Um, that, that just doesn't. That just doesn't fly. This is America. We, we are a capitalistic society, you know, um. Like if somebody, if it's a right fit for them, they wouldn't be coming to our community if they didn't feel like we weren't a good fit for them.
And if it's not a right fit, let them figure that out.
That's right. That's right. And um, and so I think, but there is something to be said for the corridors. You know, you have the Eagle Road corridor, you have the Linder corridor, you have the forty-four corridor and you have the fifty-five corridor. Like having some of these bigger, more established things on these corridors, that makes sense. Like having an In-N-Out Burger off of Floating Feather in Eagle, probably not a good idea, you know, um, but.
But somewhere else perhaps?
Like.
What, what are your thoughts on In-N-Out?
Well, I, I would be biased of, I, I'll try and hit some key areas everywhere. There's a bit of a food desert in West Eagle, like you have like a Dicky's and a So Delicious. And that's, those are kind of, and that's kind of it. And I mean, there's like a restaurant in the Chateau Place. And there's like a breakfast joint at the Dino gas station there kind of thing. But on that stretch right there. There's nothing. You can get some, you can get a quick bite at Jackson's, the new Jackson's that just opened up on Park a couple of years ago. Yeah, you can get like, you know, the hot dog that's been rolling there for three hours or something, but.
It's like that Seinfeld episode when Kramer eats the hot dog that's like fifteen years old.
Forbidden hot dog, that's right. So uh, but you see in there, there's a lot of development ready to happen in there. So as a city, should we not be pushing for something to go in there? We've been told there's pads available on Hill and fifty-five for years. That, that sign's been up for years. That like pads available. It's all re, it's all zoned, ready to go. That would be a great place for, for something for uh, like I. I would be fascinated if the Hill and fifty-five there because of the affluency. Near there, like where you got Dry Creek here, you have all of Eagle. Like, what if that was like, uh, what they do in the malls now, where they have like a, the like boutique. Upscale uh things in this section of the mall. So if you go to the mall in like uh San Jose, California, they have a Westfield Mall. They have a whole section that's, here's the Cartier store, here's the watch store, here's the Tiffany store. And it's kind of like zoned off, like in this corridor. And then you have all the, like the food court over here and your Old Navy over there.
Got it. If you, if, if a strip mall builder hears this and they build that, I'm just gonna cry. I don't like that.
But, but what I'm saying is.
More upscale stuff.
That, that area is prime for having, you know, a, a nice high-end jewel, like a Rolex jeweler, a Cartier, a, a coach bag. So it's, it's, so it's a, like, people of Eagle, we don't have to go all the way down. So it's, it's, so it's a, like people of Eagle, we don't have to go all the way down to the Boise Town Square. We don't have to go all the way to that intersection. That's a cluster that is Fairview and Eagle Road. Cause you know, you got Simon's over there and it's a great spot. You got Hal Davis down in Boise. It's just another great spot, but. But like a lot of the money in the valley is like right here. Why wouldn't we have something like, so these are not things that I would push and say, you have to do that. I'm just saying. If that happened, I wouldn't argue the point, you know?
Right. And they're doing a very good job. Kitty corner to that at Barber and Provisions and Coffee and Supply.
That's my barber.
Yeah, th- those are very nice, not cheap, uh, places that people can patronize. And again, like coffee and supply is not cheap coffee, like and, and Barber provisions is very well done.
It's worth it.
No, no, absolutely. And, and the, uh, shout out Alliance Jiu-Jitsu, they're, they're right over there as well. They just built a new building. It's beautiful. Yeah, it's, I get what you're saying. Um, and, and let me be clear. I, I don't think, well, let me ask you, when you say any business has a right, you're not entertaining like brothels have a right to come into Eagle, right? Cause I know somebody out there is like, oh, any business, bro, any business.
Sure. Thank you for bringing that up. Yeah.
Sure. And you don't necessarily want, you know, low-end smoke shops or like twenty-seven tattoo parlors or, you know, not, nothing that.
I would think Ace Tattoo Parter, Parlor being here, that if they want to open up shop, but if you're right, if it's like. The row of tattoo parlors and smoke shops, that's what a city council is here for. And that's what the citizens are here for to inform us.
Right.
As a city council, like, like we don't want to have like the food role. We don't want like downtown Eagle to be a food court. Right. Where like every, it's like. In-N-Out, McDonald's, Jack in the Box, Subway, like just a strip, like, uh, you have a lot of that stuff in California. Where you have like El Camino Real, where it's just one national brand after the other, just kind of daisy chains down the road. And then it's infilled with car dealerships in between all of these things. Certainly like we have control to, we should have control to navigate those kinds of waters. But at the same time, for somebody to come here, especially here where we're green field, so to speak. If, uh, if a jeweler wants to come in and say, I want to put a jewelry shop there, it's like, no, that'll interrupt the one jewelry stop on the other ti- side of town. Right. Or if Jack in the Box says they want to go on, um, Floating Feather and fifty-five next to the gas station out there or Beacon Light. Uh, if they want to put one across from that back gas station, there is no fast casual restaurant. On that corridor to speak of like, like Great Scott, and then that gas station on Beacon Light, those are your last two things. Before you get to have more, and then there's another gas station, right? So to set up like maybe something out there that makes sense and it's reasonable and it's measured. But to make all of fifty-five just fast food restaurants, that's probably not a good mix either.
Not a good mix.
Right.
I have a gripe. I feel bad that I'm going to bring this up.
Bring it up, yeah.
The gas station at fifty-five and Beacon.
Yeah.
They have started the tactic, they, so they have a really big mart in there and they have, they have, you know, like, um, very nice handmade stuff too. Like sometimes they have like axes and knives and stuff.
A lot of hot sauces too.
A lot of hot sauces and they, they just have like big mart, right? And it's not uncommon to understand that gas stations in general don't make a lot of money. In the gas side and, but they make money in the mart side. But bro, they have gotten in the habit of making me go inside to pay the cashier. They won't let the, the electronic card reader outside work and it doesn't even say it's broken. It just says see cashier. So they get you inside.
Fascinating.
I'm, I'm sorry to be calling you out. Please stop doing that. I, I'm in a rush. I have three kids. I don't want to go in and wait. And then they're like six people in line because everybody trying to get gas has to come inside and they're like, uh. It's just, it's like, it's like four minutes of my life. I never get back every time. Like I, I've started avoiding the gas station because they're making me come inside to pay.
Like, that's right.
I can't do this. Don't do it. I'm going to have to go to Great Scott's. Like I can't do it.
Well, you mentioned that you'd had somebody, uh, I won't spoil your future podcast, but you mentioned you have somebody coming on soon from the state's office. That's actually the, bring it up there because that's actually where that's controlled.
Oh, interesting.
There are actually regulations around things like that, um, that the state does, the attorney job and some other offices. Actually, if you bring to their attention, like, uh, especially with the life of how long that gas station's been there. Nobody can really use the excuse that malfunctions and stuff. All of them are malfunctioning. So, uh, there's actually an ADA thing component to this as well.
I had no idea. And I asked the gal yesterday, I'm like.
She just probably just works there.
Oh, of course she just works there. I was like, why do you, why do you make me come inside? And she's like, we just love you guys so much. I'm like, listen, I love you too. Don't make me come inside. Like I, I would love to keep buying gasoline from you whenever my car needs it and, and recommending, oh, just stop at the gas station. Instead of saying like, don't stop there because I have to go over here because guess what? They're going to make me come inside.
Right.
I'm sorry.
But there are so, there, you do have actual redress here or something like that, if you wanted to follow it.
I'm going to talk to my people.
Yeah.
Anyway, um, so properly placed development is what I think you're saying and, and encouraging people to come in. If you want to come in, let's talk about it. Let's talk about it. Let's figure out what, what we can do and not try to section off. That one thing that, um, Mayor Pierce said and Councilman Pike said that are absolutely in con- conflict. Is Mayor Pierce said, look, like In-N-Out, you, the residents of Eagle don't want to be the first, second or third In-N-Out. They want the fourth, fifth or sixth because let everybody get their In-N-Out fix somewhere else. Let the traffic be somewhere else. Let all of that happen somewhere else. And let's get our In-N-Out when people aren't going to come in essentially like clog up the line and bother us. Okay. Councilman Pike said immediately, I want the first In-N-Out. I want every stinking dollar from every like. Put it on the edge of the city, put it on a highway, route the traffic appropriately. So it doesn't disturb the highway or anything. And suck every single penny out of that business. That's how we get tax dollars to pay for things like parks and rec and, and things we love. What do you think?
Well, so I'm going to hijack your subject and pivot it into, uh, something I wanted to talk about, uh, that's kind of related to that. You know where an In-N-Out would be amazing?
Where?
Like right near Linder and forty-four.
Yes.
Like right there. But guess what? That would be the dumbest place to put it right now. Because if you go look up ACHD, there's somebody else that's also running in the rates that should know about this. And hopefully they talk about this, uh. As well, because they had control over what, uh, highway developments.
I don't think Mary May is inclined to come in and talk to me. I've, I've offered several times and no- nothing against her. I don't, I don't think she's interested in communicating.
But I'll give her credit where credit's due. While she was on that highway division, they did a great study saying, you know what? Linder between Chindon and forty-four, we, we need to expand this. We need to widen this. It can't be one way in each. Um, there's already some easements that we already have access to. So it's very minimal purchasing of adjacent properties. There's a couple of rivers going through there, so that's extra, but they've already done the study. It's been done since twenty nineteen. It's. Linder past, uh, past forty-four going to Floating Feather. That will be, it's greenlit. It will be expanded by twenty twenty-six. So into the neighborhoods and into our city, we will actually have expansion, but getting to our city. We have a report ready to go. We have a shovel ready project to expand. So if people talk about traffic on Eagle Road, coming in and out of our city. They all want to go to Linder to ease that traffic, but it's. Like if you are like five o'clock, if you try and make a left turn from Chindon onto Linder to get into, like the traffic's backed up. Almost, I'm going to be hyperbolic here. It's backed up all the way to Costco. It's, it's, uh, it's, it's a huge just traffic nightmare, Linder and Chindon.
I have a, I have a dear friend who just moved over right, right on that corner. It's Floating Feather and Linder, just north of, uh, excuse me, not floating, but, uh. Forty-four and Linder.
Yeah.
Just north of forty-four. So he has to make a left coming out and then to, to get onto Linder. He's like, it's a train wreck.
Yeah.
He's like, I have to plan for like an extra ten minutes and I, it's like four cars in front of me and it's going to be forever.
And you, you sit there in line, ready to go left, watching like three, four, five light cycles before it's your turn to actually turn left. And they kind of have to do that because you're turning everybody left onto a two-lane road, one in each direction. Like they could time that light to be longer to add more people if it was a bigger road. But so can we put an In-N-Out over there? Well, that would be very unwise from a traffic point of view to have a two-lane road. Uh, ingressing from, uh, Meridian to get there. Like, uh, that would make everybody in that area very, very upset.
Oh, it'd be terrible.
But what are we doing to expand that? It's a shovel-ready project that is not on anybody's calendar. There's no timeline to expand that at all. Now, but we're going to expand this low volume road from Linder to Floating Feather. That's ready to go and they're going to do that. So, so this is what I mean in my, um, when I, when I'm on social media, when I'm on podcasts like this. Socializing to people like we have to think about coordinating with other cities, coordinating with the county. And I don't think we're doing a good job of that. Like, that's what I mean is like, Linder, like I was so disappointed to realize. There's nothing happening with Linder for the foreseeable future. It'll just be a traffic jam for everybody and, uh. Coming to and from West Eagle. Just amazing to me that that's, that's the state of things over there.
There's an interesting sentiment that, uh, that I've heard a bit, which is, you know, we, the, the residents of Eagle want their privacy. And, you know, quiet sleepy town, which, which is great. But also that we're like this mass transit hub, we, like everybody's coming through. And it's like, well, we don't want to expand too much because we, we want to stay sleepy, but we can't stop people from coming through Eagle. Like everyone in the Treasure Valley who wants to go up to like McCall's coming through Eagle.
And, or see the drag races up near Emmett, right?
Right.
You gotta, you gotta, you kind of touched Eagle briefly, but depending on where you come from. You have to hit forty-four to the sixteen to get to the drag track out there near Emmett. I don't know if you're aware of that or not.
I've heard, I've heard about that.
It's super fun. It's, it's a, it's a great hot, hot August nights thing to do, go out there and watch the drag races.
You know what I want? I want, uh, uh, trailer racing. I want people in like a nineteen eighty-eight station wagon with a trailer hitch. And like some woodside teardrop shape trailer to be on a dirt circle. Racing another nineteen eighty-six Dodge caravan with a trailer hitch and like going around.
Kind of have stuff like that at the Meridian Dirt Track.
See Meridian, God, man.
They got some cool stuff.
You got Big Owls and you got the dirt track. Like you got all the entertainment that Todd wants.
That's right.
Pretty wild. You, we keep talking about a lot of things, but before I'm, I ask you a different question. If Linder between forty-four and Chindon was two la- or excuse me, four lanes instead of two lane. And you could just like wave your magic wand. Do you want the first or the fourth In-N-Out?
The third.
The third.
Maybe the second.
Okay, we're closer. We're closer aligned. I want the first.
So, well, if we're, uh, uh, I know we're all joking, joking here, but if we're being serious, the one on Fairview and, uh, Eagle. Was always going to be the first in the valley. It was always going to be the first, no matter what. Uh, they were starting negotiations with us. With Eagle, or at least broaching the topic with Eagle, uh, they already had it in their master plan. That's going to be the one. That's where they wanted it to be. So being the second or the third, you know? Uh, yeah, I'm a little offended that the old Pier One Imports over by the mall, like whoever's going to go to that one is going to have the. Very interesting experience, you know, because it's on the back of the mall behind, uh, the Cheesecake Factory. And so getting in and out of that parking lot today is already a bit of a mess. So, so when that one goes live, uh, you know, for the, for the citizens of Boise. And everybody off the eighty-four going over there, that's going to be a fun time.
That's going to be a fun.
The Napa, Napa one makes perfect sense. When they said, oh, we're, we're opening up in Napa and where it's opening, I'm like. That, that's a food corridor. Napa chose. That they decided as a city that they wanted that to be a commercial and retail corridor. With the Cracker Barrels, with the, you know, In-N-Outs, with the Jack in the Boxes. That's what they wanted for that s- city and that zone. And, and it's right off of the freeway and it pulls a lot of trucker traffic in there. Uh, so it's a, it's a great addition to that. So that's why I think, you know, like. Linder and forty-four. Hill and fifty-five, these are the crust of our city, but we, we get that tax revenue. And also I want to see people forget, um. Like service and service work, like whether you're at some retail boutique or you're at a fast food or a fast casual. Like these are perfect jobs for our younger citizens, the sixteen-year-old, seventeen-year-old, eighteen-year-old. I want them at an In-N-Out Burger making twenty-two bucks an hour, you know, and they just drive over to Linder. They're not driving. All the way into, uh, Meridian to get to their job. Like you want this, uh, citizen to learn how to drive. Learn how to be responsible, put a couple of bucks in their pocket, you know, after school. You know, these jobs are perfect to build character in our young citizens. And, and having some of these options available for them closer, so they're not commuting all the way to these places. There's something to be said for that, you know? Uh, I worked at a theme park. I was making corn dogs and burning the tips of my fingers for a summer. You know, at, at, uh, Great America in California and everything, but you know, I learned like there's consequences if you don't show up on time. There's consequences if you don't keep clean tables for your guests. There's consequences if you don't train the staff to move the line. Like, like, uh, but I also learned like, how do you manage people, you know? As, as a sixteen-year-old, I'm learning how to, how to manage other people, um, and like the most unmanageable cat herding kind of people.
Right.
Teenagers, you know, so if you can manage a teenager.
Yeah, right.
That, that doesn't, that is watching everybody else around them have fun and teaching them that the value of showing up on time and getting a paycheck. But anyways, I, I think that's an important role in society of having these types of, uh. Businesses available to our younger citizens, um, to, to learn and understand how business works from a different perspective. Absolutely.
That's a, uh, that's, that's a perspective that hasn't really been brought up, which is, uh, engaging. Um, engaging employment opportunities for our younger, our, our like high school age people, but. Talk to me about just out of high school, because one of the things I love about this area is you don't, it's not a foregone conclusion that everybody's going to go to college. And e- even being in, um, even being in college admissions. For almost twenty years as I was, I don't believe everybody should go to college. I think, I think we have overinflated the cost of college. I think we have overinflated the idea of benefit of most colleges. I think we have in, uh, inflated the, the list of majors that people can study. Like whenever somebody says sociology, my, I just, I go red. I just, I don't know what you're going to do with a sociology degree for like a hundred thousand dollars. But I digress.
No, you're right.
But the, the, I ha- I actually do have a very specific question to this because you made me think about it. For the people that are trying to integrate into college after they graduate from high school and don't want to live at home, but they also don't want to leave. And go like hours away. We have very limited housing options for those people.
That's right.
Right? We don't, we don't have a large, uh, collection of apartments for them and the apartments in particular. And they, let's face it, the nineteen-year-old working in In-N-Out, although maybe a totally valuable, reasonable, uh, citizen of the area. Just probably doesn't have the finances to buy a house, right?
Right.
So what do you make of the apartment argument? Because this is another one like public safety that gets people really fired up. The, there are lots of homeowners that say, we absolutely should not build apartments. This is not the area for it. Let them live somewhere else. It doesn't matter if they want to come work here, fine, but like they don't need to live here. And then other people who are sympathetic that might have aging relatives that need, you know, lower cost, um, uh, or, or less ten permanent. Right? If, if you're an older person, maybe you don't want a, a rancher and you know, like a backyard demo and things like that. They want smaller housing options that are still in close proximity to their loved ones and caretakers. What do you make of all this? Do we need more apartments or do we need to be very careful with apartments or do we not need more apartments at all?
Yeah. So I'll be very measured in my responses because.
As you should be.
A lot of people will take things in this topic area out of context very quickly. And they'll like to chop up, you know, um, Noam Chomsky, even though he's a linguistics, uh, professor. He loves using ellipses for a linguistics professor. I found that fascinating. Like they said this, dot, dot, dot. And this other thing. And, uh, and I'm like, well, the dot, dot, dot is the stuff that like provides the context and you're purposely reshaping a thing. So for a linguistics expert, I find that, that, uh, a little off-putting. So, um, so I'll say that upfront that, um, I hope people don't ellipsey my comments here, uh, and, and shape it into something that's not. But, uh, put frankly, uh, apartments in Eagle. That is the shape of a city and apartments are part of the shape of any city. So a non-zero amount of apartments is appropriate. All apartments is also inappropriate. Like we're not going to be a hundred percent city of apartments. But we can't be a city with zero apartments. And people forget, we have the Eagle Golf Course. When they developed that, they put townhomes in there. They understood some people. Want to retire to a town home and have access to a golf course. Some people want to retire to, or not retire, just they love golf. And they, they have a family and they need a single detached home for them and their family to be able to spread out, but be next to the golf course. I mean, if we take that example, that's like the pristine example of how we look at Eagle, right? Some people want to retire to Eagle. And it means a condo or a town home, uh, or just, uh, an apartment. Um, and that should be satisfactory. What volume of apartments? Where would those apartments go? You know, do we want three-story apartments, four-story apartments? I mean, we have a three-story apartments today, right next to the cement track factory, right there on forty-four. That's all within Eagle's space, right?
That's true. That's absolutely true.
It's, it's not, uh, depending on how things are curved, it might be Eagle, might not be Eagle, but it's, it's adjacent. It's like literally right there next to us. There's apartments there. And seemingly when you go through that parking lot, like they said, like the, uh, another person said on your cast. When you go through the parking lot of the apartments off of Linder. It's, you know, normal people, affluent people, a blend of all. When you go through the parking lot of the apartments off of Linder, it's, you know, normal people, affluent people, a blend of all that. So, but then again, there's the other argument and I'm going to be really hyperbolic and really stretch and de- de- depart reality for just a second. There's a lot of people that are concerned that apartments could go on the way of like section eight housing or section eight vouchers. And right now, a lot of, at least here in Idaho, a lot of municipalities have control and a lot of landlords have control over when and where they accept a section eight voucher. But there is a growing concern nationally that if there's a Supreme Court ruling that says doesn't matter what your local law says, all the way down to the city council. Like, eh, if you're a landlord, you have to accept a section eight voucher. I think people are concerned about that. Like, okay, we build these apartments, they're normal apartments, they're market rate, they're not low income, they're, and there's plenty, like, you know what? My parents wanted me to get some, some humility. So at eighteen, they said, you know, you gotta get your own apartment. You know, and, but they want to stay close to them, or maybe they're going to pay for their apartment. They just want them to have a level of responsibility that's new to them. Or maybe they don't get along with their parents and they're just like, but I love Eagle and I want to stay here where my friends are still here, right? Or where my community I've built is here. Uh, so you want some apartments here for that, but then people are concerned, well, what if, what if some Supreme Court ruling suddenly says like, you know, somebody who's never going to get back on their feet is permanently always going to be in an apartment right there and causing problems, right? That's the concern that's presented, right? I don't know if we'll get to that point. We certainly probably won't get to that point. In my opinion, in, in the next fifteen to twenty years, I don't see the Supreme Court saying something of that nature. So we have to be mindful that like, yeah, we think apartments should come in. I think apartments should come in. Where they come in, how they come in, the velocity, the height, all these kinds of things. Uh, you know, Mayor Pierce is absolutely correct about like the aesthetic. When you walk through the downtown, when you drive through the town, uh, you feel like you're in Eagle, right? I mean, let's not forget, we have tons of trailer parks here in Eagle. They exist. They're on Old Street, State Street. They're on New State Street. They're kind of nestled in, in different uh areas of Old Town. So we do have a diverse group of people that live here. And, you know, when I look at the police blotters, we're not seeing the apartment complexes getting any more or less calls. The trailer parks are not getting any more or less calls than the city at large. I mean, it's like, somebody might make the argument of like, maybe some lights tick uptick because, you know, we get so few calls here. One call can like sandbag a whole category, you know, uh, but um, I think it's an appropriate thing to think about.
Right.
Just where do we put it and, and how do we roll it out? I will throw a little shade for the, for the younger audience out there using some lingo there. Uh, I will throw some shade on um that, those, the complex that's going up near Edgewood. Like, at some point or another, that will complete. When will that complete? It's been going on for three, four years now. Uh, and I know that there's COVID and everything involved, but so was another project that's started after them and completed before them on the other side of town, right? So, um, I'm a little curious of like how much the city is going to hold people to task. Like if we say this project's going to go through and you give us this timeline, what happens when you drift from those timelines? You know, what does that mean, you know, for the city? Because we have a plan and we want you to be a part of our plan. I mean, because we all are doing this plan together. So when they don't hold up their end of the bargain of the master plan of how growth is going to happen at in the city of Eagle, um, and then the neighbors are like, we got floodlights up for four years in our backyard, waiting for this thing to be finished being built. You know, is that fair to everybody lining the backyard? I don't know if you read the very nice, well-done, comprehensive Boise Dev article about that.
No, I didn't, I didn't read that one in particular.
But they talked to everybody at all levels and all I saw in the article was, eh, that didn't work out as planned, but oh, well. Was the sentiment I got from the city. And I'm like, no, there's something to be done here, you know, like put a little pressure on the developer, like what's going on? Are you going to finish this? Are you not? Are there going to be, you know, consequences for not meeting these deadlines that we made four, five years ago?
Right, let's put some penalties in place.
You know, so, uh, well, I don't want to use the P word, but you know.
Okay, let's, let's put some incentives in place or have just some agreement that, hey, look, this this acceptance of your project or this building permit or whatever, like there is a timeframe on this. You can't wait twenty years for you know, or start break ground and then abandon the project and come back slowly and, you know, the neighbors have construction fencing and stuff.
Or again, have the communication. So when my citizens come to me as a city councilman and say, I've had a floodlight in my backyard for eighteen months, I can give them a response. You know what? You're right. They've been communicating with us. This is what's going on. I don't know why they're not telling you directly, but I'll tell you, I've been in constant contact. That wasn't the sentiment that I got from that Boise Dev article at all. It was, huh, I guess they're not done, are they? That, that shouldn't be your response from the city, in my opinion, you know.
Yeah, but man, I keep reaching out to Boise Dev because obviously I'm having these great interviews like we're having right now and, and with everyone else. Like, you know, you guys are doing the same interviews I'm doing, but you're doing them in like legacy journalism fashion, right? Like, just give me the list of questions you want me to ask and let me have the conversation and I'll make sure I hit your questions as well. And then like, you have a living article. They get, people can hear it from the candidate with, with no, with no journalistic manipulation. Not that Boise Dev is anything but that, but honorable. It's just a different form of media. And, you know, like you go to uh an elementary school or middle school, or let's say elementary school and everybody's standing around waiting for their kids, looking at their phone. They're not reading on their phone, or at least not majority of them. They're like scrolling through, you know, Instagram and things of that nature. So meet people where they are. So I li- I actually really appreciate your comment of uh, a non-zero number. So it's like, yeah, look, we should have some. We don't want too many, so we just have to be careful. But the idea that like, oh, apartments don't belong here in Eagle, it's like apartments are part of a city plan, right? Like you have to have, well, you don't have to, but you should have if you're going to be a fully functioning city that takes care of uh people uh just out of school or gives people a spot when they're relocating or, you know, you have, I mean, God forbid, a couple split up and somebody needs temporary lodging or, or, you know, they, they want to be close to their kids, but they can't afford a brand new house. You know, people.
Yeah, seven year old wants to drive five minutes, not five hours to see the other person.
Right, that's a different, or, or aging, aging relatives, you know, aging relatives is one of the biggest things that I feel like people in Eagle should understand, which is, look, when the parents get older, they start their retirement. Maybe they want to sell their house as part of the retirement. Maybe you want to reverse mortgage and stay in your house. I don't know, whatever you want to do, but the point is, you, you might. Or you just want to get closer to your loved one that might be caring for you. All of these things. Now, speaking of, speaking of older relatives.
Yeah.
The senior center.
Yeah.
The senior center. I mean, this is one that almost needs no introduction, but
Yeah.
Obviously, the, the city's suing the senior center to recoup the money the city that, the city had funding from outside sources for.
They did.
Right? So these were not e- citizens, uh, excuse me, Eagle citizen tax dollars. Am I correct? The money that they gave.
It was, it was part of this uh COVID response packages.
Right, that was given.
Dulled out.
Right.
From the federal government.
So the federal government gave the city of Eagle some money and said, hey, look, help your distressed businesses. The city of Eagle invited the senior center to come on and apply for it. The senior center provided all the documentation. The Eagle Council did decide to give them money. They got money. Now they want the money back. So the city's suing the senior center, senior center suing the city. Someone else is suing the city and Valley Transit and the seniors, like there train wreck of lawsuits and spider webs. In the midst of this, obviously, this, the Eagle Senior Center organization gets booted out of the physical residence, not even like the Methodist church. I believe they're in a church. I think it's Methodist. It, it doesn't matter. They found, they found uh.
Temporary accommodations.
Right, that are not.
I'll use the phrase temporary accommodations. That's a good, that's a good lead in.
That's a good one. Uh, hit me, go.
So, uh, you know, one of my first actions, I think, uh, once I'm sworn in is to immediately restart the discussions of how do we get them back into that facility? Just straight up, let's just cut through everything and say like, that senior center, uh, the lease should not have been removed. It should be brought back. Um, you can go back and forth about like whose equipment is which equipment and whose deals were which deals and things that started in the late eighties and how things evolve. Um, I'd be fascinated to look at some of the original documentation and agreements. Because um, to not be permitted to renew, renew your lease for one dollar per year on a no, no fault, uh, I would have to imagine somewhere buried in that documentation that they at least, somebody covered themselves and said like, you could never use no fault.
Right.
So I, I, it's, uh, or at least if somebody comes back to me and says, yeah, we looked, it's not there. But it'd be fascinating for somebody to look in all that original uh meeting minutes and, and contracts and master service agreements and lease agreements to see, hey, did somebody say on record somewhere, you know, like, don't worry, we'll never no fault you.
Right.
Because uh, that in of itself will save everybody a lot of time. Like, it says here, no fault, you did a no fault. Let's just rewind this and put them back where they belong. Um, so, but, but that's me trying to be a problem solver. Maybe it's not there, but maybe we should say, let's put them back there. And if it's not there, let's put a no fault, a no no fault clause. It's so that they can, because let's say we put them back there and then uh under, you know, mine and the rest of the city leaders' guidance in our terms and then our terms expire. And then somebody's going to want to boot them out again and they're going to be right back where they started, right? So I think if that's not in those clauses today, we should get them back in there and get a clause to say, we will, we cannot no fault you out of this.
So you would res- not only restore the senior center, but you would take, attempt to take meaningful steps to prevent this from happening again.
Hundred percent, hundred percent. Um, people are worried about the transit being required to come into our town, like having a bus stop on State Street, having a bus stop on forty four. Um, people are really pushing back. They don't like the idea of public transit expanding its lines. And we don't technically have to do that today because of the size of our city and the scope of our city. But as a city grows, by Supreme Court rules, there will come a time when our city is going to be required to do that kind of stuff. So, and I know that this bus thing is coming out of left field while we're talking about the senior center. But think of it this way, if they don't have a senior center and they say, well, we're just going to bus our seniors to Meridian so they can go to a library or senior citizen center there, we're kind of putting ourselves on a path to uh, the city being required to have like paved in bus stops and everything. And if the city citizens don't really want uh bus stops yet, I mean, it's going to come like maybe thirty, forty years from now. There's just no escaping the event horizon of that black hole. Like the federal government says, that's just how cities are. They get big enough. You have to be part of your county's transportation story, but we don't have to now. But when you start going down the road of getting like forced paratransit, forced buses to offset that the se- this thing that's in our city is no longer here. You're going to speed the velocity of mandatory bus routes in, in Eagle. And if that doesn't sound appealing to our citizens, then they should because they might look at the senior center and say, I'm not a senior or I'm a senior and I don't care about that. It just doesn't apply to me. Well, maybe, you know, having bus routes does apply to you. And this is going down a route, in my opinion, and people can disagree with me. It's going down a route that, um, a lot of people would not be amused with in the city of having forced bus stops everywhere if we go in that direction. Um, so if you don't want that, then maybe reconsider your opinions on the center, regardless of whether you use it or you care about it, you know, that sort of thing.
Well, I feel like if we're all lucky enough, we will all get old.
Yeah.
Right? And I, I think that I mean, you don't have to care about old people, but it's like, what was that movie Tin Cup? Where uh Kevin Costner is criticizing his competition because he's trying to woo the girl and the girl likes the competition who's a jerk. He's like, I will tell you something. He hates old people, children and dogs. And then later, like somebody shows that like the grandparents bring the grandchild and the dog to get an autograph and he's like, it's the trifecta and he's like, rah. Anyway, yeah, it's a, it's a tough one. Um, there's, there's a big looming thing that not many people are talking about. Some are, but it seems that the utilities in this area have like snuck up and become an issue, like the water rights. And it seems to me, um, uh, Christopher Hayden, who's also running, was telling me that he feels that the water rights that Avmore did or did not have were actually part of the key considerations for Eagle allowing them in. Because they would have been in, to some degree, um, their construction would have been hampered.
Right.
Right? Because they didn't have extending water rights. And here, the Eagle Water Company, you know, that's not a black and white kind of thing. Talk to me about water rights.
Well, yeah, well, in that particular case, uh, again, people, uh, if presented with all the information, maybe they can have a, a more bigger picture of, of things like development in our area and specifically Avmore.
You got a La Croix right there as well, by the way.
Oh, thank you.
Crack one hard enough you want a little bit here.
I appreciate that. But, um, the water rights deal was already a done deal before the annexation. So any argument about like whether or not we need to annex them to save water for the rest of the city or save water for or make sure everybody's pooling in from their own water resources to the rest of us in Eagle. Uh, that was already done. So we could, we could have just not had Avmore be part of Eagle and had a water rights agreement with the development of Avmore. So I just want to put that out there very clearly, like, we didn't annex them to get water rights. We already figured that out long, and it's a ten year uh water agreements with them. And then there's the arsenic questions going on out there and also what's going to be developed and what's not going to be developed out there. So whose water were you really offering to who? There's a lot of murky questions around water rights uh in North Eagle right now.
Back up with the arsenic. What do you mean?
Well, there is some reports out that some of the wells in that area, the area, I want to be very careful because I don't want to say anything like like defamatory, but just, people are talking about like various different water availability in the North Eagle master plan had come up with high levels of arsenic. So basically you can't tap these wells. Or you can't add these wells to the, to the master water plan, like, like where it gets funneled through for filtration and final delivery and all that. So there's a lot of unavailability of water in or near Avmore. I'll say that very carefully because I don't want to say something and have somebody uh, uh, say like, you got that all wrong. But, uh, yeah, if you read some articles and some, some reports that were published, uh, like basically water feasibility reports, uh, there, there's a water arsenic issue.
Yeah.
In our valley, and specifically up there. And whether that's impacted their need to work with the Eagle Water and Suez Water to make sure they get enough water for their development. That's a big question that people are asking and we're not seeing either the developer or the city or more importantly, the uh Suez and, and Eagle Water. They should be answering these questions as frankly as possible. Like, no, that was hyperbolic. Like, here's this, this and this. I don't know where that came from or I know where that came from and they were wrong. Anytime somebody says something like, there's bad stuff in the water, you want, especially a city leaders that have control of these things. If it's false, you want to get out in front of it. But right now, it's floating out there that like, there's just some water that's unavailable under the ground out there. And so that was allegedly the motivating factor to shift around who has access to what and who has rights over what in the area. And uh, maybe that's a hundred percent wrong, but people will need to come out and they need to come on your podcast and tell you or they need to
I would love it.
Write a letter to the editor to, to one of these papers or, or online uh blogs and, and set the record straight. But as of right now, a lot of people are like, oh, they only did it because they found out they had access to less good water than they anticipated.
Yeah, I would, I would love to talk to somebody from the water district and understand like what the actual water quality is and if there are any areas that, that have lesser favorable quality. And it, that's actually a big concern for my, my wife and I because we live, you know, I mean, Dry Creek Ranch used to be a farm and, you know, fertilizers and whatnot, so.
Nitrogen and everything gets into the water table.
Yeah, and we, we, we draw from wells and um shout out Action Plumbing, by the way, now that we're on the topic. They came out. Water softener, RO systems, the, the whole bit. Um, and in fact, my, my neighbor, Chris, Action came out to put a RO system in originally, and then we had to drill through this countertop anyway. And then my, my neighbor who's also contractor, Chris, helped me with the RO system, but we love having an RO system in, and it we actually have a uh, an electric kettle, one of those glass ones, right? We make a lot of pour over coffee, yeah. We had a, we had a whole house filter and a water softener and this thing was cloudy as cloudy could be from the minerals and whatnot in the water, just, and just stuff in it. Even with the whole house filter and we got the RO, RO water setup and it has literally declouted the glass. Like everything is crystal clear now, like our dishwasher is crystal clear, like it's kind of awesome. But yeah, water, water is a huge consideration and made that national news years ago with Flint and just like, oh my gosh, right? Like how could this have happened? And then you find out the kids have been poisoned for like decades.
For a long time, yes. And so we have uh the Suez that turned into Viola. Um, we'll, we'll just call it what it is. It was a fiasco because, um, the city actually made some attempts to try and socialize to the citizens. This is what we're doing. This is what we're not doing. This is why we think it's a good deal for this company to come in and acquire this gentleman. He was like in his eighties. And he just wanted to sell off his Eagle Water business and he was going to sell it to them. And a lot of people wanted the city to take on that responsibility. And there was, there was at least some uh level of communication there, but, um, but the city was pretty straightforward that they didn't want to buy it. Like he would have sold it to the city and then it would have been a, and like now all of us would be paying Eagle Water. Now, like in my subdivision. Now, like in my subdivision, you know, I pay Viola. People are really concerned like, well, they're going to have unchecked cost increases or the way like, because the gentleman that had it, he was just like, I'm making enough money. He rarely raised rates and and when he did, people are like, oh, you could raise it more than this. Uh, and he didn't want or need have a need for that. So so but they are a multinational conglomerate. Viola like Suez was out of France and Viola is out of like somewhere in Europe. I can't remember where, but it's this big conglomerate of different municipal utilities, not just water. They they're in other like spaces as well. But um, but yeah, so they are incentivized to constantly go to our commission, our utilities commissions and ask for water rate increases. And then the, you know, they they told us, oh, well, we went ahead and did you a favor and did seventy million in in water changes as soon as we bought it. And now when I turn on my tub, my bathroom smells like a you know, community pool, just reeks of chlorine after they took over. And I was like, well, you know, it's good that you're treating water, but I feel like like when I filled up my tub before, it didn't smell like a, it didn't smell like a chlorinated community pool and like now my whole bathroom reeks of of like uh of that. So they're definitely changing and altering the water and people are I'm not happy about that, you know? So um, and you know, so the city, I felt like uh everybody felt feels like they could have either done a better job of saying why they didn't have an interest in buying it, or they could have just bought it. Like instead, they were like, these are the reasons why we want to push that away from us. Instead, they should have said, these are the reasons why it doesn't make sense for us to take that on. Like uh they should have asked, they should have answered the question differently. They kind of distanced themselves like that's a private thing and let them do their private stuff. And the citizens here were very vocal on that one of we don't want it to be a private thing. Give us a reason why it shouldn't be taken on by the city from the taxpayers that want you to take it on. Instead, they said, we don't even want to broach it. That's, that's not something we should broach. And they're like, we're asking you, please broach.
Right.
And tell us why not to. Uh, so I think, uh, again,
Communication.
Maybe it could have settled the exact same way Suez bought the water and that was it. But at least we all felt like our voices were heard. We all felt like we had a seat at the table, you know, like it didn't go the way we wanted, but at least we know and we can walk away saying, you know, you know, like, yeah, I don't wholly agree with that, but I understand why they chose to do it that way. But nobody's walking away from that discussion or that debate feeling that way, right?
Right. Like, oh, I have all these answers and maybe philosophically I don't agree, but I see the reasoning.
Right.
Again, very like, wait, why? Suddenly we.
Yes, suddenly, uh, suddenly it's a done deal. So Suez is in and and everybody else, it just has to deal with it, right? So. Yeah.
Robert, we've covered a lot of, we've covered a lot of landscape. Lot of stuff. Um, my goodness, what a, what a conversation. Is there anything else you would like to to express?
Yeah, I just want to let everybody know because a lot of people might not recognize me or know who I am, but you know, I'm on my HOA of my subdivision, Great Sky Estates. I've been on it for a couple of years now and everything. So uh, you know, there's, I have like a non-zero number of uh public service. I'm constantly going to the city of Eagle as a representative of my hundred and seventy-nine people in my subdivision saying, you know, hey, are you going to do this or are you going to do that? Or we're not happy you're doing that. And so um, I'm very familiar with City Hall and working with them and the other thing that was mentioned in one of the articles written about me, which was uh the Shooting Sports Park. Um, I'm confident that we'll get um actual uh firearms lanes and and activities. Right now it's kind of limited to archery that they're building out. I'm hoping that they're not going to do a bait and switch. So I'll go on the record right now. If for whatever reason you guys don't like me and don't want me in city council, but my my words like I hope the city doesn't decide, you know what? We built the archery and we're going to stop there. You know, that's it. Uh, like we have enough of a shooting park. We have archery. I hope that they stick to their guns and that the private public partnership, they're looking for donations from the community. I hope that that you know, comes to fruition and people step up and make the donations. The city keeps its promise to the people that donated that land and it's not just limited to archery, but you know, all shooting sports, you know? I think that's a very unique thing about Eagle. We're very, you know, like a lot of people here are very much ranchers. A lot of people, they're in a subdivision like me, but like I have to drive all the way to Meridian if I want a defined space, we'll say, to go shooting, you know, if I don't want to do that BLM, if I want to have a range master, you know, I have my kids, I take my kids out um once a month. Uh, my daughter's a crack shot with her with her twenty-two long rifle uh um bullets. Um, she's just now moving up to three eighty for handguns. Very proud of that. But I'd like to be able to just drive to the sports park and do that. I don't want to have to drive all the way out to, you know, a couple of indoor ranges. She doesn't like indoor ranges because of the, even with the ear protection and the smell that builds up in a contained space, you know, so I don't want to have to drive all the way out to Blacks Creek or all the way out to Nampa or Codwell, or just be out there on BLM land. I want somewhere where when I bring my daughter, you know, like there's a range master, he can make sure there's there's no steel stuff to
Yeah, sure.
Prevent fires and stuff like that and and things stay cleaned up and everybody pauses. We can go and readjust targets. Uh, some people actually like that level of uh extra level of of safety, especially with the kids around and everything and having something right here. I mean, Meridian doesn't have that. Boise doesn't have that, you know? What local municipality do you know of that's a city that has an outdoor gun range? That would be amazing feather in our cap, you know? And when people hear Eagle, I want them to hear, oh, Eagle, the one with the public gun range. Yes, because people draw a lot of conclusions about who we are and which Bill of Rights we care about here, just by that statement alone. And and I think that's, I think that's what I want people to know when they think Eagle. You know, like, that's another, you know, it's a fun thing they did that wasn't necessary a few years ago. They passed an ordinance saying they were a a gun sanctuary city. I don't know if you remember this or not.
I do. I do recall.
And you know, it's a bit of fluff. What it doesn't really mean anything, but what it does mean, and I do agree, if I was on the city council, then I would have voted yes to. Again, it's just sending a a nice gentle note, like we're being a little political at the national sphere by doing some of those, but it's at least a nice plentiful polite, gentle nudge, reminding people like, yeah, that's who we are here. And and that's what's important to us is all of our Bill of Rights, not just some of our Bill of Rights. So so yeah, sorry, little long-winded there, but that, but the sports park is is really a passion project that that somebody got started and I wanted to see that through to the end.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
One more question. You reminded me with the sports park. We didn't really talk about West Park. And I mean, it's obviously, a lot of people have a lot of opinions about it. What do you think? Is it? There's a problem, obviously, that we don't have any parks on the west side of Eagle.
Right.
That is an issue. But we also, like you've been pointing out, you're not saying no to anything, but it has to be the right place, right? Was West Park the right place for a neighborhood park? Or is the sports complex that's definitely going to be bigger and awesomer and everything, but definitely farther away? Was that the right call?
Well, uh, you know, I'll use an old commercial from, I'll say CK Estos, why not both? You know, there's an old uh taco shell commercial where they're like, why not both? So um, uh, you know, that's how I feel like, yeah, why do we have to sell that? We can still do the sports park and we can still do, we still could have done that. I don't, uh, especially with all of this free land that we're supposed to get from Avamore, right? So we're supposed to get this whole Esquirean thing. We're supposed to get this whole river run thing. Uh, we're supposed to have all these special spaces that are allocated towards uh, you know, expanding our our communities parts, parks and wrecks experience. Again, all north of Floating Feather, right? So again, like West, West Eagle definitely has a like a activities desert, so to speak there. So this West End next to the high school, perfect spot. It bleeds right over from that, like, oh, we have to worry about parking? No, we already have the high school parking on a Saturday. You know, you coordinate with the high school, make sure they're not having like a band thing or or like a sports event there. Or now they can coordinate like, great, we were thinking about doing our own baseball thing. We can do all of our baseball at the sports park instead. So there's a a a public, public partnership that like a a really big missed opportunity there. And let me tell you, um, I don't go to Boise's softball park anymore, not since the incident. They have no parking around over there. It's completely a mess. All of the neighbors, they put up illegal cones all along in the side streets to prevent people from parking where they have a right to park. And uh, the city sits there and watches people park in the wrong spots and they just ticket everybody. They're not being good police uh of citizen stewards of saying like, hey, I noticed you're about to park here. This is, I know it's kind of hard to tell with the trees and the signs, but this is actually a no parking zone. They sit there, like like literally, they sit there smiling at each other, smiling. We have video of them like getting all excited, like I get to write another ticket. And as soon as the person gets a thousand feet, they jump out and they quickly write a ticket and put it there. So they watched the whole time and they didn't say, hey, like ju- just as a good service, because I'm a good public servant.
Right.
That's not a spot, you know, like I know we're working on getting a sign to make it more clear, but that's not it. Instead, it's, you know, a revenue harvesting place. So we don't go to the softball park over in Boise anymore because like one, it was poorly planned. And two, instead of them working with their, you know, public servants to to work with what they have to work with, they're just harvesting money for the city. Like, that's just a bad experience for everybody.
Sure.
So this West End one could have solved so much of that easy access coming in off the forty-four right near Legacy where a lot of people are interested in baseball and softball. Bringing other people into our community. I go to my friend's house in Codwell and like, you're one of those Eagle people. They don't have any incentives to come in and enjoy, like if their kid had a softball game, they're like, oh, we thought you were these pinky up hoity-toity people. You know, you put your pants on one leg at a time, just like the rest of us, you know, like, uh, yes, we do enjoy like this kind of higher echelon vibe here. But because we all work together to build a nice vibe and there's no reason why we can't share it with people, right? And that was a missed opportunity for softball teams from all over the valley that could have came in and saw like, this is who Eagle is. I don't know, like, uh, I'm very
No, no, no.
Like, uh, like misty eyed about these kind of stuff. I really want like, like, like we're citizens of the Treasure Valley, not like I'm in Eagle and you're in Middleton. You know, it's like, no, we're all here in the Treasure Valley. We all look at each other and make eye contact. We all tip our hats when we walked on the street, whether we know each other, regardless of what city. And that could have been the crown jewel of a sports park thing that I feel like it's going to be missed now.
Yet the uh, that sentiment is very, very near and dear to me because the one of the greatest criticisms I had of of Danville and Northern California in general is that you had an incredible disparity in in socioeconomic status like right on the borders of towns. And there was this, he, there was no dignity. You know, going back and forth both ways. It became like a real us versus them. It was like, oh, you don't want to leave Danville and, you know, go into that area. And then every time you go out to eat, it's like you're the the server. There was no economic opportunity in that immediate area. So they were driving like a half an hour in from some other place. And there was, there was just animosity and weirdness. And it's like, that could happen here. And it, that was one of the most striking things. When I first came here, I remember we went to Rembrandt's and people were nice. There wasn't like weird sideways glances. There wasn't like, oh, thank you. They're like, oh, you're welcome. Yeah. Like, oh, my gosh, like nice people, like there's, there's dignity for all.
Yeah.
You know, and I, and I think that's a really important thing. Um, making sure that not only does Eagle flow into Eagle, but we all flow into each other successfully.
Right.
And we integrate because again, as people pointed out, Eagles is like transit hub and you don't want it to be when people come into our little section of the freeways or the highways or, you know, their their travel plans that it becomes this weird thing. You want to, you want it to be good.
Yeah, absolutely. Hundred percent. That's a great, great note to end on right there.
Absolutely. Well, Robert, thank you for what you're doing. Thank you for the things you're bringing to light. I hope the campaign goes well, win, lose or draw. And again, I just, I appreciate your actions here.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
This podcast is brought to you by MTUstudios.com. If you're looking to start a podcast or make content for any level of your business, MTU Studios can help. Just reach out to us today and we can start shooting tomorrow.